Well, I'd like to call to order the October 21st, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome. It's good to have a full house tonight. We are very pleased to have with us tonight Girl Scout Troop 2377 from Center United Methodist Church to present the colors.
Color guard advance. Color guard post the colors. Color guard honor your flag. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, color guard dismissed.
We're very proud to have Pastor Bob Page from Connect Church, Sharon Forest Baptist Church, for our invocation tonight.
Thank you. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly fathers, we come before you tonight with humble hearts, ever mindful of your grace, Father, and the wonderful riches you've given us, of your mercy, Father, and this wonderful country that we live in called the United States of America that you bless so mightily, and this wonderful county of Cabarrus, Father, that you bless, and we thank you for these leaders, these commissioners here that lead us so ably, and county manager and each of the other leaders here, Father, we pray that you would bless them, Father, honor their proceedings, Father, and I pray that you would put a hedge text around them and around our county, uplift them with your strong right hand, Father, and we just pray that every word we say and everything we do would bring glory and honor to your name. Father, please forgive us and cleanse us from all unrighteousness, help us to do your will, Father, in all things, and, Father, just thank you that we live in a country that is governed by the people, for the people, and is about the people, Father, and we thank you for the servant leadership we have here in our midst, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Page. We appreciate you being with us. We'd also like to welcome our youth commissioner, Grace Fister, from Concord High School. It's good to have you with us tonight. At this time, I would ask our Girl Scout troop if they would come to the podium and introduce themselves, and Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen for each of you as you leave.
Mr. Chairman, while they're coming forward, I was just going to make a comment. We have had a lot of very cute Girl Scouts come and do the color guard. This might be the cutest group that's ever been there.
No disagreement there. Yeah, if you would tell us your name and what school you go to and what you enjoy about Girl Scouts.
I'm Kimberly Lisk. I go to Jane Frees Middle School, and my favorite thing about Girl Scouts is the people in it.
If you will go to my right, your left, Commissioner Honeycutt has a pen for you.
My name's Natalie, and I go to Weddingdon Hells Elementary School. My favorite thing about Girl Scout is about selling cookies.
Great. We all love those cookies, too. Thank you.
My name's Victoria. I go to Harrisburg Elementary School, and my favorite thing about Girl Scouts is to make new friends.
Great, thank you.
My name's Madison, and I go to Harrisburg Elementary School, and my favorite thing about Girl Scout is, Girl Scouts is playing with my friends.
Great, thank you. We appreciate all of you being with us here tonight. Next up is the approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Sign names.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And next, we have approval of the agenda, which you all have a copy of that before you as well. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page 27?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to recognitions and presentations. And we are very pleased to have Londa Strong from Active Living in Parks to recognize our Cabarrus County Senior Games participants. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We have with us tonight senior games participants from state, as well as national, as this year in Albuquerque, and we had several to go, and I'm going to ask Susan Donaldson to come up here and recognize those folks, and we're just going to ask them to stand up where they are. Oops. Thank you for your time. And so I asked the folks, the participants, to wear their either local senior games shirt or their North Carolina senior games shirts, so that's what they're proudly wearing tonight, and we appreciate your support for this program. So those folks who are here tonight who went to the national senior games include Janet Buck, came back with a couple of gold medals in bowling. Jeff Hagie, who I believe came back with a couple of bronze medals in bowling. We were well represented in bowling. Marvin Martin, who came back with a gold medal in archery. Now he's getting his shoulder fixed, so he'll be ready for the next national senior games. Jag Sankar, who participated in some track events at the national senior games. Stiff competition, right Jag? Jennifer Skinner, who I believe brought back two medals in bowling, gold and bronze? Thank you. We had hoped she'd get that gold in singles, because she blew the competition away in the singles prelims, but then in the finals, had an off day unfortunately, but ended up coming back at the end and playing. I'm just saying. Okay, so now everybody knows you blew it in the finals, okay. And also here tonight is Carla Williams, who participated in tennis doubles and singles at the nationals. And did I miss anybody who participated in the national senior games? So I'll just quickly go. These folks had to pay quite a bit of money, it was $140, just to enter one sport at the national senior games, let alone paying their airfare or other transportation to Albuquerque, staying in hotels, paying for meals, and the bowlers were there for a good eight or 10 days, I think, so they were there quite a while. For the state senior games, I'll just call out each of the athletes. We're still competing. Golf is going on today and tomorrow, and then we still have basketball, three on three. So Kathy Berry is here tonight, Myra Bumgarner, Shirley Brewer, Janet Buck, Margaret Cleveland, Jeff Hagie, Marvin Martin, Virginia Martin, Jerry Owen, Mally Plowman, Jag Sankar, sorry, am I talking too fast? Lynn Shires, Jennifer Skinner, I won't embarrass you this time, Mary Watts, Carla Williams, and also representing our senior games participants, and they didn't participate in senior games state finals this year, but Anita Helms, Ernie Morrissey, Mike Plowman, Ellie Poyet, and Lynn Shires. And Lynn, you were actually there. I don't know why I had you on the wrong list, my bad. But anyway, but again, we thank you for your participation and support. I think most of you all are aware that we hosted the state pickleball tournament last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. There were over 500 participants, 580 individual participants with over 900 participations. Some played singles, doubles, and mixed doubles, or any combination of those, and a lot of those folks were here for quite a few days. We counted up, there were 359 motel nights from that, and that includes, you know, doesn't include lunch and gas and all those things, so we felt like that was a really good boost for Cabarrus County. And Susan Donaldson is the, excuse me, the one that does the majority of all of our senior games, and she's the one that put all the work in. Most of the people sitting here were volunteers last week, one way or another, either making meals for volunteers or volunteering themselves, and she needs a big round of applause.
Thank you so much. I certainly understand why we can't have an archery demonstration, or even bowling, but I thought we would at least get a cheer from the Sparks as long as they're here. But congratulations to all of you. We appreciate what you do representing Cabarrus County. I think, as Londa pointed out, this has a real positive economic impact on our county as well, the activities that you're all involved in, so we sincerely appreciate what you do and congratulate all of you. Yes, ma'am?
And the Sparks would like to cheer for you, commissioners. Thanks for what all you do for us.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And so now, I'd like to call on Michelle Wells and Byron Hagler for a presentation.
I'm going to substitute a player, if that's okay. I'm going to substitute our NCRPA Board President Keith Jenkins in place of Byron with us this evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here, and although our Girl Scouts aren't here, my favorite thing about Girl Scouts are eating their cookies, so I always love that time of year. As Michelle said, my name is Keith Jenkins. I'm the president for the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, and it is our pleasure to be here with the Board of Commissioners for Cabarrus County this evening. We want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to recognize Londa Strong, Director of Cabarrus County Active Living in Parks Department, with our fellow award. NCRPA is the premier nonprofit organization in our state, providing professional development and advocacy on behalf of the park and recreation profession, and our fellow award is the highest award that we give each year. The fellow award is awarded to leaders who demonstrate exemplary professional leadership and character. Londa joins a very exclusive club of only a group of 99 professionals in our 76 years of existence to be awarded our fellow award. I'm going to turn it back over now to Michelle Wells, our executive director. She has a close personal connection for this award winner, and I'm going to let her proceed. Thank you.
So I'd like to ask Londa to join me at the podium, please. So while she's coming up, I'm going to go ahead and start with my remarks. So it is indeed my pleasure, she's scared that I have the podium, she should be. It's indeed my pleasure to be here tonight because my professional relationship with Londa began in this county in 1988, when I actually did my internship with Cabarrus County. It was Parks and Recreation then, and Londa was my supervisor. So it is scary that I turned out as well as I did after my internship supervisor. It's been a pleasure to work with her since I left Cabarrus County in a variety of roles. I worked at senior games before going to the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association, so I have worked with Londa all of these years in a variety of different roles. Londa has worked with Cabarrus County for the past 38 years, and the last seven of those years, she has served as the director, or she has served as the director since 2007. She received her undergraduate and graduate degrees from Eastern Kentucky University, and in addition to being a certified park and recreation professional, she's a graduate of the National Recreation and Park Association's Revenue Resources Management School and also the Sports Management School. For more than two decades, and I got to read some of this, because there's some numbers here that are very impressive for you guys to know, she oversaw the administration of the county's matching incentive grant program, seeing nearly $5 million utilized for community recreation projects, including 35 school projects, and the creation and the enhancement of various park and recreation facilities by local nonprofit organizations. She's given back to her profession through her service to the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association by serving on our Board of Directors. She's been the chair of our membership committee. She's represented us with our national organization. She has served on our awards committee. She was a leader in our Region Seven group, and she currently serves on our scholarship foundation board. Here locally, she has worked to bring Parks and Recreation to the planning table with many organizations in your community, the Health Department, the Community Planning Council, the Health Advisory Board, the Wellness Coalition, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. She's been actively involved with senior games by serving as an event manager both at the local and state level. She serves on the Senior Games State Board of Directors, and she is actually a senior games participant. Not too long ago, I recall hearing a story of where Londa agreed to participate in bocce because there was a citizen who needed someone to play with. There aren't many people who would say, "I'll step up and do that as a department head in that role," but that shows her commitment to this community and its citizens. She volunteers locally with Meals on Wheels, Special Olympics, and events through the Council of Aging. As a director, and this, some of this came in from her nomination, it says she is most proud of supporting and watching staff develop into leaders, and I think we just saw that tonight when she recognized Susan for Susan's role that she's played with making senior games happen here in your community. She also promotes her team and the relationship building amongst them, not only through participation in educational opportunities, but as well as after-hours opportunities for them to get together and know each other. During her career, she has learned patience, the value of networking, how to be a leader, and to be cost-wise. She's worked hard and developed many unique relationships with patrons and professionals with whom she interacts, and it is my honor, on behalf of the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association, to recognize Londa Strong with our fellow award. Londa? So we had the opportunity at our conference at the middle of September to present this award to Londa at our state conference with about 400 of her peers in the room, and we appreciate the opportunity to come here and present it again in front of her home community and for you to know the good work that she's doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations.
I have one thing to say, other than, other than, thank you.
The prize.
What time do y'all want to leave? When Michelle said that I volunteered to play bocce with someone, I just want y'all to know that she fired me in the middle of the match. I asked her how to play. I'd never played bocce, and she got really mad because I didn't know how to play. And then I didn't score in one frame, and she fired me right there. But we won, she got her medal, and she was happy.
Before you step away, Londa, so as someone who has worked with you since 1988, I think it's fair for me to say this. You went through all those accolades, all those different things she has done, all those ways she's involved, but from an employee's standpoint, I think all of our commissioners recognize the way you're invested with the entire Cabarrus County workforce, through CH3, through every employee committee, through our employee recognition, our employee picnics, all those different things that you're invested with, so we all benefit as Cabarrus County employees, because your heart is not just in this community, it's with all your coworkers, with the folks that you work with, and it is very much appreciated. And I know, obviously, I'm sitting in for Mike Downs tonight, but as someone who has worked with you for two more years since beyond me, 1986, I know he would say the same thing, and congratulations.
Thank you. And I think one of the ways I get to be on some of these committees is because I complain. And they're like, "Well, you think you can do it better? Come on." I've not been known to not speak my mind most of the time, although that's one thing that I have learned that wasn't on that list, is I can't always say what I think. So when you see my eyebrows, you know that I'm thinking something I can't say. But thank you.
Well, congratulations. We are certainly all very proud. We are very happy to have John Henderson with us tonight for a presentation on Red Ribbon Week and a proclamation.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We're the Mecklenburg County Young Marines. We're a youth leadership development program of the Marine Corps League. We've been around since 1959. We work with kids on teamwork, leadership, and discipline with the emphasis of teaching kids about the dangers of illicit drug use. Every year, between October 23rd, October 31st, we celebrate Red Ribbon Week to honor the life of Special Agent Kiki Camarena, who died by the hands of the drug cartels. He was really close to closing down the drug cartel in Mexico. Unfortunately, they got a hold of him first, and this is why we're here today, to bring awareness about how, not just the dangers of the drugs are, but association with the cartels and that lifestyle with selling and stuff. These are my two young Marines, Young Marine Private Levi and Luke Adams. Introduce yourself. Tell them where you go to school. You're homeschooled. Sorry, forget it. Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Young Marine Private Luke Adams, and I'm homeschooled, and my favorite thing to do in Young Marines is probably PT and learning how not to use drugs.
Great.
Hello, my name is Young Marine Private Levi Adams. I'm homeschooled. My favorite thing about, part of Young Marines is probably PT or drill.
Great, thank you. We appreciate you being with us. And I'll read the proclamation that we have proposed tonight. Red Ribbon Week 2019 Proclamation. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Mecklenburg County Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique "Kiki" Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administrative Special Agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas October 23rd through 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Cabarrus County, and urges all citizens to join in this special observance. And do I hear a motion to accept this proclamation?
I move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and the proclamation is adopted. Thank you for being with us tonight. And now, we're happy to have Tony Miller with us for a Veterans Day proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, and all members, excuse me, and all commissioners, and everyone in attendance this evening, good evening. Proclamation, Veterans Day 2019. Whereas America is founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all, and whereas America has called on men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to preserve our rights and freedom, and to keep our democracy safe, and whereas through their steadfast defense of America's ideals, our service members have ensured our country still stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know the blessings of freedom. And whereas on Veterans Day, November 11th, 2019, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history. And whereas, we also remember and pay tribute to America Armed Forces, whose courage and sacrifice secures our freedom, keeps the peace, and defends our values around the world. Now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2019, a national Veterans Day, and call upon our citizens to always remember and honor our veterans and those who continue to serve this country so willingly to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy for all. Adopted this 21st day of October, 2019.
Thank you, sir. And I should have offered an introduction. Tony is our Director of Veteran Services for the county and does a wonderful job, and we appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
So do I hear a motion to adopt the proclamation as read, proclaiming Veterans Day?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Also, on behalf of the county and veteran services, we'd like to invite everyone to our Veterans Day program with the Boys and Girls Club on Monday, November 11th, at 11:00, and we encourage you and all your family members to come, and thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. And we are, next, we have Kelly Sifford with a proclamation for Weatherization Day.
Thank you. As you all are aware, we have been participating in the weatherization program for over 20 years now. That program provides energy efficiency improvements for low-income families, as well as a companion program to do repairs and replacements on hanging air systems. So every year, October 30th is the national day, which we celebrate Weatherization Day, so the proclamation goes like this. Whereas October is National Energy Awareness Month, and October 30th is designated as the National Weatherization Day, and whereas the county of Cabarrus has a longstanding commitment to conserve its resources and to help low-income households through its Weatherization Assistance Program, and whereas the state of North Carolina has administered the Weatherization Program since its inception in 1976, providing a variety of state and federal resources through numerous community action agencies, housing authorities, and departments of local government that serve people in every county in the state, and whereas it is important to recognize the importance of these programs that ensure that all residents, especially those living at or below the federal poverty level, have the opportunity to live in energy-efficient, health, healthy, safety, safe, and comfortable homes provided for by the Weatherization Assistance Program. Now therefore, I, Stephen Morris, Chairman of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 30th, 2019, as Weatherization Day in the county of Cabarrus, and urge all citizens to join me in this observance, signed in this October 21st, 2019.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation as read?
I move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to informal public comments. I do have a yellow card from William Andrews. If you would come to the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is William Andrews, and I currently serve as Vice Chairman of the Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame. There are other hall committee members here with me tonight, and I would like for them to stand and be recognized. Thank you. Thank you. My purpose here this evening is to bring a heightened awareness to the board and the citizens of Cabarrus County of the Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame. Established in 2011 by Cabarrus County Navy Mr. Tony McLamrock, and a committee then comprised of Mr. Doug Harwood, Jim Kilgore, Bob Malden, Donnie Whittington, and Wayne Williams, the Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame was created to recognize and honor outstanding achievements by athletes, coaches, managers, and contributors who have brought significant recognition to themselves and to Cabarrus County through sports. The Hall of Fame is governed by the Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame Committee, and operates according to the bylaws as established by that committee. And additionally, we are a nonprofit organization, as that term association is defined in the North Carolina Uniform Nonprofit Association Act. And as such, we presently work as a separate entity without the endorsement of either Cabarrus County or the Board of Education. Our committee may consist of up to 15 members, plus advisory members as determined by the needs of the committee. Nominations to this Hall of Fame are submitted by the public, and a nominee may be either living or deceased. Annually, inductees are selected by the committee from the pool of nominations on hand. Selection is via ballot, and a nominee must receive the vote of 75% of the voting committee members in order to be inducted. Each October, an induction ceremony is held at the Boys and Girls Club in Concord. This event is open to the general public, and admission is free. Over the past few years, attendance at these induction ceremonies have been in the neighborhood of 250 to 300 people. Awards and administration are provided by donor contributions from area businesses and individuals. Since the first induction in 2011, 84 outstanding athletes, coaches, and contributors have been inducted into the Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame. These individuals have made their mark at the high school, collegiate, amateur, or professional level, some of them in all of those levels. Some folks, these folks you may be aware of, and some you will not be aware of. However, you will appreciate the high level of accomplishments of all of our inductees. On Saturday, October 26th, this coming Saturday, we hold our ninth consecutive Hall of Fame induction ceremony, when nine new inductees will join the Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame. Six are living and three are deceased. We invite you and everyone else to attend. Nomination applications for the Hall of Fame can be obtained at any Cabarrus County Library Ranch, the back Cabarrus County Museum, and the Cabarrus County Boys and Girls Club. Applications must be received no later than June 30th each year. Eligibility requirements are noted within the application form. We are hopeful that the Cabarrus County Sports Hall of Fame continues to benefit our county by bringing greater recognition to former outstanding athletes, coaches, and contributors our county has produced over the years, so that their legacies will continue and thus enrich the history of Cabarrus County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we move now to our consent agenda, which consists of items that we have discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. Do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to new business. First up, we had a public hearing scheduled for Project Kiwi. We have a request to reschedule that public hearing to November 18th. Did any of our EDC folks have anything to add to that? So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reschedule the public hearing for Project Kiwi to our November 18th meeting. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And now we have Samantha Grass with us to talk about Project Sebastian with a public hearing to follow.
Good evening. Samantha Grass with Cabarrus Economic Development. First, thank you for the opportunity to present Project Sebastian to you all this evening. Inland Seafood is considering to relocate their current location in the Charlotte region to a site in Concord. The Concord address is 8501 West Moreland Drive Northwest in the Oakmont Business Park off DeRidero. The company's operation, they process and distribute seafood and specialty items. This location will also be a regional headquarters for the organization. Caris Cold Storage LLC will be developing the site and constructing the building, and will lease the facility back to Inland Seafood. The building will be 35,000 to 45,000 square feet, and can be expanded up to 75,000 square feet in the future. The projected investment is estimated to be 12.5 million in real and personal property. There are 100 jobs associated with this project. Most of those jobs will be transfers from their current location. With this relocation expansion project, though, they plan to add 30 to 50 new positions. Their average wage is above our current county average wage. The Cabarrus County Grant Analysis is based on the estimated 12.5 million projected investment in real and personal property. We are asking for your consideration of a three-year, 85% economic development grant. The estimated grant for that three-year grant term is $235,875. The net revenue to the county during that grant term is over $41,000. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Samantha? Okay, thank you. Okay, as advertised, we do, will have a public hearing on this matter. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Economic Development Agreement, three years, 85% between Project Sebastian and Cabarrus County, and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. So we will all be hungry when we leave here tonight. We've talked about Girl Scout cookies, and now we're talking about seafood. So it's all falling together. That completes our new business for tonight. At this time, we move to reports, and at this time, I would invite any commissioner who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees to give updates.
I have a very quick, oh, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Very quick.
I just know she always has a list.
Probably about senior games or something. Just kidding. Greetings from Harrisburg. Just wanted to mention that the Farmington Grand Opening, groundbreaking, I guess is a better term, Friday, October 25th, will be taking place, and the public is invited. So that's a sizable development for Harrisburg, and a lot of excitement around it, and just wanted to mention that.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Cogger is correct. I have my senior report. They're good about providing me the data that we need to share. I don't know how many of you, if anybody was able to go to the Touch a Truck event this past Saturday, but they had over 4,000 people in attendance, and over 100 vehicles, and pieces of equipment, and skydivers, and bouncy houses, and just a fun event for the community. So wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, look for that event next year. I hope to see that that happened again. Approximately 600 participants, as you saw some of ours from across the North Carolina competed in the 2019 Senior Games, and the state pickleball finals were here last week, which they said, and a lot of these people volunteered to make that happen. Two things coming up. Senior Center Travel Club will go to the Southern Christmas Show, November 19th, and Hamrix, November 25th, and then a luncheon for our veterans and their spouses will be held on November 8th at the Concord Senior Center. Reservations are requested by November 1st. So make note of those events, and plan to attend if you can.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do serve as liaison to the city of Kannapolis, and they have had some exciting activities there with their street opening that occurred about two weeks ago. Was a really exciting event, and things are moving in a very positive direction there. I encourage anyone that has not been up to take a look at that to do so. And a wonderful opportunity to do that will be on Wednesday night, when the Kannapolis baseball team, currently known as the Intimidators, will have their big reveal, and will announce their new name going forward in the new facility that will open in April of 2020. So a lot of exciting things going on there. We do have a number of other reports included in our information here. I will also mention that we always have openings on various boards and committees with the county, and we encourage our citizens to participate in those. Anyone that has an interest, you can find a listing of those boards and committees on our website. There is an application available there if you're willing to serve, or you can contact the county manager's office for additional information. At this time, we'll accept general comments by board members, if anyone has anything else.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say a few words. And I promised you guys that I'd sort of give you an update after the end of the Charlotte Airport Academy. Commissioner Poole and I attended that, and we both got perfect attendance for all of those meetings for seven weeks. And I learned so much about it, and I know Commissioner Poole could expound and tell you a lot of things that I'd probably forget, but I just wanted to let you know, and the citizens of the county know, how important the Charlotte Airport is to us, and the economic impact that they bring. You know, the information that I have, and I left you all a little bit of information at your desk there, but the terminal opened, and it just don't seem like it was that long ago, but the Charlotte Terminal opened in 1982. And it seems like it was a lot further than that to me, but the information they provided was 1982. They're currently in the process of building a new tower, and part of our tour for the airport authority there, we got to go in the current tower, which is, will soon be the old tower, and it sort of reminded me, Steve, when we went to the Library of Congress up in Washington, we got to go up in the very top of the Library of Congress, and the little tiny narrow stairwells. Well, they just kept, they started about like this, and then they got like this, and by the time you got to that last floor, it was about like this. So we really enjoyed the tour. We went to see a live burn of an aircraft that actually was burning, and how that they brought these fire trucks in, million-dollar fire trucks, and they could literally fight the fire with a joystick. They don't even have to get out of the cab. And how they, you know, the safety and customer experience, and all of those things were a top priority. We got to go to the American Airlines Training Center and see where, you know, their training is conducted. We got to go in a flight simulator. We really enjoyed that, and just like being in a plane, you know, you're just there, and those things are on stilts, big stilts that go up and down, and, you know, and you can imagine being in an aircraft with a little turbulence, how you feel. Well, that's the way, you know, but on the outside, you're seeing this thing do this and do that, and make all kinds of things. But that was good. But the economic impact to the region here is somewhere around $23 billion a year. It's 5% of the North Carolina state product in revenue generated by the airport. They pay $1.1 billion in sales tax. And we talked with the concessionaires that owned the facilities inside of the airport. The lady that is over all of that, she gave us a very brief scenario, but had a lot of speakers, the chief operating officer, the chief executive officer, and just so many various speakers. It was very informative, and I'm glad this board let me go to that. And I hope that if they do it again next year, someone else from the board can go, because it's a learning experience. It's time-invasive, no doubt, but I enjoyed it. And I'd like to invite Commissioner Poole, if she'd say a few things. Maybe I left some stuff out. Would you like to add to that, Liz?
I think you covered it pretty well. One of the main things about the airport is it's an enterprise fund, so their tax dollars do not support the airport. And they cannot make a profit off of the airlines, and that is a legislation, federal legislation back in 76, I believe. So they charge them by the square foot. So that is the reason why, as one of them said, they are in the parking and food business, because that's where they make enough money to pay back those bonds for everything that they have to issue. So it was, it was a very interesting, seven sessions we went to, I guess. Lots of walking, lots of touring, lots of, no taking a pocketbook, put your driver's license so everybody could see it, and confiscate it when you went to the tower, so you weren't certain if you're going to get driver's license back, and all that kind of stuff. It was a very interesting mix of people. It's a competitive process. It's, as a reminder, Wes Cabarrus High School that will open next school year will have a aviation/avionics program, and there's some people there who are hoping to also join this and go next year to get input. And they will be working very closely with Concord Airport, which also provides a huge economic incentive for this region. And I dare say that the EDC would chime in and say, "We would not have the investment we have if the Concord Airport did not exist." So it was very informative, as you said. And it was a very good, very good, very good long meeting process. Very nice people, who were trying to make sure people understand that the tax dollars do not go to support the airport. But you all should park there and pay for parking. Do not rush when you get into the terminal. Make sure you get something to eat and drink. When you get back, you do not need to rush to get home, as we were told. You should also stay and eat another meal with them. Do not Uber. That's not good. Make sure you park. So that was very informative. But anyway, thank you. I did enjoy it.
Thank you both for being willing.
You know, I noticed the last time I was there, there's now a food counter and coffee station at the baggage collection area. And I thought, well, that's a little odd. After I've got my bag, why would I stop? Well, I know now, I've got to turn right around, put my bag down, and continue to eat and have a cup of coffee. So I appreciate that information.
Very good. Any additional comments? If not, we do have need of a closed session tonight to discuss pending litigation and economic development issues. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A, 3 and 4. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you.